Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, James Mysick. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. The Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have Bill Number 822. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Departments of Finance and Public Works to execute an agreement of sale and all related documents necessary to effect the purchase by the City of Pittsburgh of 5164 Broad Street in the 10th Ward, and to accept a deed for the property. Bill Number 823. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant and the total sum of $250,000 in favor of Siruth Chatterjee, care of the law offices of Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire, as final settlement related to the action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania. Public Works Committee, Mr. Cog Hill is the Chair. We have Bill Number 706. Resolution providing for an agreement with KCI Technologies for Design, Engineering, and Miscellaneous Services associated with the 28th Street Bridge Construction Project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $900,000. Bill Number 710. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvanian Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the 28th Street Bridge Construction Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $1,220,000, reimbursable at 95%, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500. Bill Number 818. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, any amount of $17,000 for Tree Pit Site Preparation Work, completed for the East Carson Street Scape Project. Bill Number 824. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution Number 675 of 2008, entitled "Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and the 2009-2013 Capital Improvement Program by transferring the remaining $41,269.78 from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms." Bill Number 825. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 193 of 2020, that amended Resolution 855 of 2011, entitled "Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget in order to correct job numbers and budget years on the City Farms Project." Bill Number 826. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution 772 of 2012, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and Approving the 2013-2018 Capital Improvement Program by transferring the remaining $167,048.3 from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms." Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have Bill Number 702. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to hereby name the previously unnamed trail in South Side Park to Keeling Coal Trail. Bill Number 703. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to hereby name the previously unnamed multimodal trail in Highland Park to Cattail Trail. Bill Number 719. Resolution further amending Resolution 863 of 2019, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program by reducing bridge upgrades by $12,500 and increasing 28th Street Bridge by $250,000 to reflect the local Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvanian Department of Transportation shares." Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have Bill Number 819. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the University of Pittsburgh Chiller Plant Project, which will involve the construction of 15,000-ton Chiller Plant and a turf athletic field located at 530 through 570 Champions Drive. The existing two athletic fields at this location will be removed. Bill Number 820. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the new Granada Theater redevelopment at 2007 Center Avenue. And Bill Number 821. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Habitat for Humanity of Greater Pittsburgh-North Braddock project located at 516, 518, and 520 North Braddock Avenue. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. When your name is announced, please give your name and community for the record. Our first speaker is Ikuhana Halmaukina. If Ikuhana Halmaukina may begin? You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Greetings of peace, light, and love, everyone. My title is Ikuhana Halmaukina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Today I would like to share with you a story about my beloved brother who died in a police chase on May 25th of 2006. While the police were pursuing and had the opportunity, they were pursuing a man by the name of Devin Miles, a few streets away from where my brother and his dear friend Michelle Rankin were traveling from Home Depot. My brother was going with her to paint one of her rental properties. And as they were just traveling along, they wound up getting ran over in a police pursuit that did not involve them, by the way. They were innocent people who died and perished. Today, my brother would have turned 49-years-old. He's a man. He was a brother. He was a son. He was an uncle. He was a great friend to many people throughout this area and beyond. I honor him today. We will be holding a vigil for him at the scene where his life was taken. It was found that the police were negligent in their actions, causing both of their deaths. Negligent, because they did not follow their police conduct, their police procedures. They didn't follow their SOP, their standard operating procedure. Okay? That's negligent. And due to that direct negligence, they are now no longer with us, only in spirit. So I urge everyone, I say their names, Michelle Rankin, Jerome Smith, and I would like to honor a moment of silence for the both of them. Restore liberty to this region. Restore equity, because equity equals justice. Do not continue to criminalize and marginalize the people of the land. You have an opportunity for the council members to enact strict legislation that will force the hand of officers to do everything by the letter of the law. Their conduct is in question. Their actions are in question. What will you do? Ask yourselves, what will you do to right these wrongs? There are several babies left behind due to this incident. Left to grow up without their mother and their fathers. What will you do, City Council, for the many injustices that have not been righted? This is a unique opportunity to right.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kotan Ki Bay.
Greetings, greetings. Cody Ki Bay of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. First off, I would like to thank Anthony Cog Hill for meeting with us, and Councilwoman for meeting with us as well, even though brief and short. And we still have yet to hear from other council members. We still, we have sent out emails. We would like a response from those other council members as well, so we can formally introduce ourselves as who we are, being Iroquois Confederacy Aboriginal American People, as we represent the Aboriginal indigenous peoples of the Americas. I'd like to bring to attention on the matter of reform, as far as government officials are concerned, and remind everyone of the laws that bind, namely the Constitution, that everybody takes an oath to protect and defend. And something that's, we've been experiencing lately is deprivation of our rights under color of law, and according to the Department of Justice, Section 242 of Title 18 makes it a crime for anyone acting under the color of any law to willfully deprive us of rights which are protected by the Constitution, as we are protected by the Constitution at Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. For the purposes of Section 242, acts under color of law include acts not only done by federal, state, or local officials within their lawful authority, but it also applies to those acts done beyond the bounds of those officials' lawful authority, especially when those acts are done while that official is purporting or pretending to act in the performance of his or her official duties. Persons acting under color of law within the meaning of this statute include, but not limited to, police officers, prison guards, other law enforcement officials, as well as judges, care providers in public health facilities, and others who are acting as public officials. And the offense is punishable by a range of imprisonment up to a life term or death penalty depending on the circumstances. And another code, which is 18 U.S.C. 1091, genocide. And that's what our people have been experiencing for quite some time since colonization. And that makes it a crime for me, anyone either in whole or substantial part, to forcefully assimilate us and removing us from our culture heritage, which is also punishment of a million dollars fine and up to death, including death. And that is under Title 181091. And I want to remind everyone that the laws have been in place for quite some time, and it's time for everybody to hold themselves.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shaman Poma.
Greetings. I would like to further my conversation that I stated yesterday with City Council about the ill depredations and ill-conceived policies that have been forced upon me, traveling upon our lands. It was unlawful for McCain and Chester to tow my automobile. It was unlawful for Officer Massesso 4322 badge number, and Sergeant Nidig 4029, for they did, in fact, admit and operate under the color of law, the deprivation of our rights, which has been already explained to you in full detail. As well, they violated 49 U.S. Code 102 under that Department of Transportation, F2A NB. I implore you to read that to get more understanding. That is the reservation of the trust obligations that they have to our people based upon the constitutional oath that they took. I did ask them if they both were sworn to the oath and took an oath to the Constitution, and they both agreed. As a matter of fact, they all agreed. This was a violation of my rights in attempt to extort from me. It is City Council and the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh's obligation to correct these ill depredations enacted upon me by your police department and hold these officers accountable to give remedy to our people and to return what was stolen from us. They need not to face prison time, although that is on the record. They need trainings in how to deal with us properly, according to their oath, and according to your oath of office and to the Constitution. You pledge allegiance to this, your flag. You also take an oath to your Constitution, and this Constitution is clear as it relates to us, and Indians not taxed. So all of these ill depredations that I was forced to experience at the hands of these two officers, that is well-recorded on video, in their admission of using the color of law against me, in their admission of forcefully attempting to assimilate me. They were well-aware of what they were doing. So it is now time for the City of Pittsburgh to stop ignoring the Aborigines on our land. We have made many attempts and conversations in these public forums. We've spoken with several City Council persons who have been willing to work with us in helping to educate your citizens, all of your citizens, and how to deal with us in a peaceful manner. We only need to travel upon our lands and enjoy our life and liberty as everyone decides to do, as long as we are not harming anyone. We should not be molested, harassed, in any form, as we travel. We are not required to get your registrations. We are not required to get your driver's licenses. This is a form of forced assimilation, and I refuse to be forcefully assimilated.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glendon Hyde. Is Glendon Hyde with us? I do not see him. We will then move on to our next speaker, which is Wahad Ansari.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Wahad Ansari, and I am calling about liquor license that was supposedly supposed to be granted to the Cabaret Banquet Hall. Now, I served the community as a business owner. I've been in business in the community since 2001. And I feel like that we have an obligation to our neighbors and people in the community, the residents. Being that I have been in the community the longest, I get a lot of complaints about the situation, and we have parking issues. We have issues with the banquet hall opening, and they have occupancy issues because there's a cabaret upstairs, a cabaret downstairs. Now, I don't have no problem with somebody making their money, but we have to respect our neighbors in our community, and I feel like a lot of the tenants don't feel safe in their own home because of this issue. And we had just got the notice yesterday that there was going to be a hearing on this. And we hope there's a continuation, that we can all get together and figure out something, because we don't feel like that we had the proper representation or the time to get together and present our case for this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gary Goins. I see Mr. Goins. Mr. Goins, you're on mute.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a member of the neighborhood. My name is Mr. Goins, and I live across the street from the cabaret. And my problem is, I've been living here for 40 years before they had anything on the street, and now I can hardly get any sleep for the loud music. The garbage that her tenants are putting out there should be put in a can and not thrown on the street where rats can eat it, and that's where I've been seeing rats out there eating the garbage. People from the building urinating and on the sidewalk in the middle of the street. And like the other young man said, I got a notice yesterday for a liquor license for them, and I just would appreciate it more if they thought about the neighbors and had more respect for the people that's been there. The elderly people that's been there for a very long time have more respect for us to where we can come outside. I mean, we can't even get no sleep at night. The music is so loud. The people are hollering and screaming, and it was just a shooting down there the day before yesterday. It's just, it's getting out of control, and the law has not been followed. So I state my case. I haven't really had time to work on this case, but it's just not fair to me and all my neighbors who've been there for years for someone just to come and disrespect our lives, our lives as a whole, and all the noise and all the screaming. Thank you. I appreciate your time. I rest my case, and I hope to hear from you soon. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Morris.
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name's Peter Morris. I own property about five parcels away from the Cabaret Banquet Center. My dad's owned property right next to me for about 25 years. I've owned my property for about three years now. I take no issue with the cabaret operating here, as long as they keep the peace in the neighborhood, which they've not been doing. Before I became self-employed, I was in the event business myself for 11 years. So I'm well-versed in these types of issues, as well as solutions for these issues. Most of the issues that I know the residents and myself are having stem from parking. They stem from the trash on the sidewalk all the time. The dumpsters are overflowing on the sidewalk, completely obstructing the sidewalk. During her events, there's people everywhere, outside on the streets and the sidewalks. As the gentleman before me mentioned, public urination. I have tons of footage of people peeing on my dumpster all the time. After this last party where they had the shooting, was a baby shower. I have three dirty diapers outside my gates. There's a number of things. The parking is probably my biggest concern. During her events, they park all over the sidewalks. They park on the corners. They park on these very tight streets. Wheeler Street and Conemaugh Street are very tight before there's any cars parked on them. Conemaugh Street's one-way. And when they park on Wheeler Street, they're completely on the sidewalks, and it starts to become an issue of, can we get a fire truck up the street? Can we get an ambulance up the street? Not just if somebody gets hurt at the event, but all the elderly folks on the street. That's a big issue. For me personally, during her parties, I can't get to the property with, I have trucks and trailers and things. Even with my smallest trailer, or sometimes even my pickup truck, which is just a regular pickup, I can't get down the streets. I can't get to my property. Pardon me here, I'm just reading some notes off. She, when she opened, she had a parking lot right behind the building. That was her off-street parking. That has now been turned into an event venue with a stage that she doesn't even keep the dumpsters in. That's now event venue, so there's no off-street parking. Every single patron of that business is dispersed on to the residential streets of Conemaugh and Wheeler and/or Frankstown Avenue. And it's just very, very tight. And I can say after, I've never worried about our small little community there. It's extremely quiet. But after watching the video with the police of getting my footage and some of the barbershop footage, there were five individuals involved. All five of them had guns in their waistband. And that just made me extremely uncomfortable that there's that many weapons right here, right there, because we don't have stuff like that happening on our block. It's very, very quiet.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Watkins.
Good morning, in the heart. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Thomas Watkins. I live in a community on Wheeler Street. I'd like to be heard about the resolution to transfer this liquor license from Sheller, F. Holder to the Cabaret Place, Simone Godson. And I oppose for various reasons. First of all, I did not see a sign that should be prominently displayed that the liquor license was being in process. But next of all, I heard her in her testimony say that it's not going to be a bar all hours of the night or whatever. So if the liquor license does not stipulate that, what recourse do we have if she turns that cabaret place into a bar and restaurant? Because just because she says she's not going to do it does not mean it won't happen once she gets the license. Because just cause she says she's not going to do it, does not mean it won't happen once she gets the license. I don't see any reason why, like she said, it would be uh easier for her clients not to bring their liquor when they've been bringing the liquor for the ten years that she had this place without a problem. So for her to sell liquor on top of that, I think is going to cause more problems than we already have. Uh, see, um, she has big parties and sometimes there are, she has three event places plus that parking, it used to be a parking lot. So sometimes three events is going on at the same time. Now, I have poles so that they can't park on my sidewalk. My grandfather put those there when he lived here fifty years ago. So my family's been in this neighborhood for a while. So they can't park on my sidewalk, but they drop trash. They'll empty their cars when they come from the party. They'll leave the styrofoam containers. They just throw bottles and cans. Her dumpsters are overflowing. I have seen people urinate, defecate, and sometimes even fornicate out here when it's nice and quiet and crowded and it starts to get dark and the events is going on at the time of day. So it is a lot going on and with that liquor license and selling liquor, it's going to make it even worse. She's talking about leaving a legacy for her family, but that's at the expense of our neighborhood. Leaving a legacy for her family, she called this neighborhood blighted, but it's only blighted because her trash is out there. The two big dumpsters that they came at five o'clock in the morning to empty this morning, they had to knock half the trash out onto the ground because the dumpster people couldn't pick it up. The guy pushed the dumpster, dumpsters back into her garage, went back in that building and left a three, four foot, maybe about six foot pile of trash out there, out there right now. And I watched them three boys walk past my daughter and I before they went up the street and shot those other two boys on, on Sunday. So it is a lot, too much going on and a liquor license will only make it worse. Cars also race up and down the street. They, they get drunk.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Parker.
Hello, how's everyone doing? Uh, my name is William Parker. I'm the CEO of Vincent and I'm the number one advocate for diversity, inclusion and technology here in Pittsburgh. A few weeks ago, I was on here suggesting that we find and invest in a tech company led by someone of color to come up with uh software for the facial recognition that could be used and implemented here in the city of Pittsburgh. Uh, now today, I even suggested that we uh raise some funds through the Black Pittsburgh Equity Initiative. Now, uh later on, council will be uh, I guess, approving or awarding uh, uh, individual by the name of Saruth Chatagiri, who was an officer who basically blew the whistle on his fellow officers who took city money and invested or spent it in a company that never delivered the technology, a million dollars. And now today, you guys are on here uh about to award him a quarter million dollars because he spoke out about that and he was retaliated against. So my thing is, when are we going to get serious about investing in black entrepreneurs or people of color in technology and coming and having us come up with the solutions that could be used and implemented here in Pittsburgh? I think that that would uh get a lot of attention and would uh na- nationwide. Uh, we need a move like that and we need to be more inclusive. Technology is the key. That's how we're all on here today. That's how we're talking. That's how we communicate. And we just can't be the guinea pigs. We can't just be using a technology. We need to create it. Like I said, there's a guy on here who y'all be awarding today, a quarter million dollars because he blew the whistle on fellow officers who took a million dollars of the city money and just gave it to whoever that their friends, family or whatever. I also would like to see some type of website. I checked online for this Black Pittsburgh Matters. Well, it's time to get on top of that. That needs to be blackpittsburghmatters.com.org.gov something. That's just out there. Nobody's taking it. How do we get that information? How do we get any information as far as what y'all got going on with the black equity uh situation? Uh, with that out and I hope y'all really take this serious and I'm encouraging everyone to get out here November third and vote, 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 vote. All right, I'll see y'all later.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gracie Aviles.
Hello?
We're with you. We can hear you.
Yes. Okay, this uh, my name is Gracie Adlers. Uh, I live at eight zero zero one Conoma Street. I, I'm calling because I disagree with the uh cabaret banquet hall intention to get a liquor license because all the neighbors were having a lot of issues with this place, uh, with parking, trash, even rats. Uh, shooting uh my bedroom window face. The, the place I supposed to be the parking lot of that place. And sometimes I, I woke up at two AM, three PM, even one day I woke up at five AM with the, for the people uh making, talking loud music. I mean, this is a, a nightmare for us, for all the neighborhoods. Today, right now, uh, one of my neighbors told you, uh, the truck came and to pick up the trash and they were not allowed to get the whole trash. I would love somebody come pass by, somebody from the uh city of Pittsburgh to see the bunch of trash that is right now placed in the sidewalk. I mean, one day I was right here in my, in my Porsche and I heard a noise. When I look at, I saw a rat coming out from that place through the fence. I took a video, I sent it to Wuha because we need to do something. I mean, it wasn't my power, that place will be closed because we don't have peace. I live here with my son and my daughter, that's it. We are peaceful people. We don't bother nobody. Another day, um, I came from my work and I saw a big box of a cake on the top of my trash can. Uh, I realized it was my son because his best friend had, had a birthday those days. Maybe he came over with a piece of cake to celebrate with my son, whatever. And I asked him, no, mom, nobody can hear. So my neighbor, so I saw two, two ladies came and put that uh cake on the top of your, they tried to, to stick it in, inside of the trash can, but didn't fit. So they put on the top of my trash can. And I let her know, I said, look, look what happened. I mean, it's still cake, a bunch, a, a lot of cakes right there. What can, going to happen if a raccoon climb on it to get the cake or a cat or a rat, whatever, will be a mess in my yard, in my yard, not in the sidewalk, in my yard. I mean, that license can be granted for real because this is going to be worse, worse. Uh, I hope my testimony helps for this purposes because this is, even when people said that it's not a good area, uh, it's very quiet except when something's going on there, except when the party is, is, is being held, uh, held there. I mean, it's, it's, it's a disaster and I hope my testimony helps for this.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Rosemary Clayton. You can begin speaking, Ms. Rosemary Clayton.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Rosemary Clayton. I also live on Wheeler Street and I'm calling about the cabaret also. As everyone has stated, um, the parking is hu- um, horrendous. Um, trash in the street all the time. The noise is unspeakable. I um, I've, I've lived here for forty-four years and of course there are, there are always bad times, but these, but it's been bad the past ten years. Unfortunately, I have uh, um, my car parked in a driveway at, at my home, at my home and I have to police people every time she, she has an event to tell them not to block my car in. And I've called the police time and time again. And um, when um, Simone found out, she asked me to call her anytime someone blocked my car in and it's been too often for words and I don't think this is the way to spend a life. Um, policing my car, I mean policing my driveway, picking up trash in front of my home and trying to keep people from using my home as a, as a the front of my home as, as a um restroom. And um, I dare not say anything to them because um, I never know what kind of people are doing this. I have had too many arguments with them already and I just hope that this liquor license, license isn't granted because we have trouble now. And I can't foresee us not having more trouble in, in the days to come with people um, urinating and, and making noise and also lording on the street. Um, it's just not a place to live.
Thank you very much. Um, having exhausted our list, we will now move on to our standing committee agenda and would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
There.
Mrs. Kell Smith? Ms. Joss Burger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. LaValle Chair?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Uh, we have two new papers, I believe. Uh, first bill is eight twenty-two.
Bill eight twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Finance and Public Works to execute an agreement of sale and all related documents necessary to effect the purchase by the city of fifty-one sixty-four Broad Street in the tenth ward and to accept a deed for the property and further authorizing the expenditure of funds for the purchase, closing and other associated auxiliary costs not to exceed ten thousand dollars and further authorizing acceptance of that lot and dedicating that lot and an adjacent city on lot together as the Nelson Mandela Peace Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to uh bill eight twenty-three.
Bill eight twenty-three, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in favor of Saruth Chatagiri as final settlement related to the action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
No, motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
Any, any question?
Councilman Wilson, okay. There's, there's an executive session request.
Yeah, I see that. Thanks.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held. Um, that takes us to our invoices. We need a motion for the approval of invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to our interdepartmental transfers, which I believe we have. We do uh motion for, to approve those.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoice, the transfers are approved. That takes us to our P cards. We need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved. Second.
I'll need a motion to waive rule eleven, I believe it is, to approve a um, a purchase by PLI. Um, it's, it's construction fees that are state mandated. However, the state no longer accepts checks. Uh, and so if you, we either have to do a wire transfer, which would cost us every single time we do it and or we have to do it via P cards, which is the easiest, easiest and most efficient way according to our controller. So we need a motion to waive rule eleven so that we can also approve those.
So moved.
Uh, second, really brief discussion. Uh, Mr. Chair, we're on P cards now out of um, out of um, uh, invoices and we skipped over the interdepartmental transfers. I'm just
We did the transfers.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion to waive rule eleven? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? They, we have waived the rule. So now we need a mo-, so now we can vote to improve them in their entirety. Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I'll just point out that even for me, I had to like click several places to get to the P card transactions. So it's like a hyperlink inside of the Word document that I'm reading is that our agenda. And so I just want to say that I think you're talking about the two, I only see two at the top, the list that exceeds the amounts. So it's a uniform construction, UCC is the vendor. Um, and it's approved, you know, it's approved by all the department heads. It's eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then the second one, same thing, PLI, B O C A Trust Fund, Uniform Construction, UCC is the vendor, nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So just for clarity, because I know that took a while. There's also uh one down below. What is our limit? Which I don't know offhand.
Five thousand.
Okay, because there's one for exactly five thousand for the police department for dressings like biomedical supplies that are five thousand dollars on that same thing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Uh, we have two deferred papers, bill seven oh six.
Bill seven oh six, resolution providing for an agreement with KCI Technologies for design, engineering and miscellaneous services associated the twenty-eighth street bridge construction project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I just wanted to thank council for their patience. I was able to go back and forth quite a bit with members of the community and kind of some advocates and um, Director Ricks and I thank her for taking time to do emails and phone calls. So everyone's comfortable passing these bills today as well as the bill that's related under land use with Councilman Wilson. But it really was really helpful for everyone to just kind of digest information and get on the same page. Um, and we may have more discussion, I think, with these um, community as we move forward to the other bridges in the system that aren't high enough for the double-decker bridges. So I think it's an ongoing conversation, but everyone's comfortable with these bills today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seven ten.
Bill seven ten, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the twenty-eighth street bridge construction project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed one million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars reimbursable at ninety-five percent and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our new papers, bill eight eighteen.
Bill eight eighteen, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Western Pennsylvania Conservancy in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars for tree pit site preparation work completed for the East Carson Street, Streetscape Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill eight twenty-four.
Bill eight twenty-four, resolution further amending a supplement in resolution number six seventy-five of two thousand eight entitled adopting and approving the two thousand nine capital budget and the two thousand nine entitled adopting and approving the two thousand nine capital budget and the two thousand nine through twenty-two thirteen capital improvement program by transferring the remaining forty-one thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms.
Madam Clerk, if you could uh read eight twenty-five and eight twenty-six as well.
Will do. Bill eight twenty-five, resolution further amending resolution number one ninety-three of two thousand twenty that amended resolution number eight fifty-five of two thousand eleven entitled adopting and approving the two thousand twelve capital budget in order to correct job numbers and budget years on the City Farms project. Bill number eight twenty-six, resolution further amending a supplement in resolution number seven seventy-two of two thousand twelve entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand thirteen capital budget and approving the two thousand thirteen through two thousand eighteen capital improvement program by transferring the remaining one hundred sixty-seven thousand forty-eight dollars and three cents from Brookline Boulevard to City Farms.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh so I, I first wanted to say, I think I talked to uh most council members about this transfer of money. Um this really, just as a reminder, this stems back to when the pandemic started and the food shortages and we said, hey, let's, let's grow food, you know, so um so, so I'm gonna take the opportunity to just kind of give you a quick report if I could and why I'm transferring this money. Um this company was designated for a capital project on Brookline Boulevard. Um that was probably complete, I want to say, five years ago. So it's been sitting there um just really doing nothing. Um so this farm um pro, that I'm proposing is actually on Brookline Boulevard. So the money would actually stay on Brookline Boulevard for its intended purpose. And it really gives me an opportunity to say, you know, the city has committed somewhat um to, you know, supporting it's growing food and it's much more than that. And I'll go on about that in a little bit, but so it's really just an earmark at this point. Uh there are many obstacles still. I have a access road and things to, you know, overcome before we actually spend any of that money. But I think it will also help me raise, raise money for this project. And when I say raise money, I mean foundation money, you know, I don't intend for taxpayers to foot the bill for all this, but but if I have a little commitment from the city there, when I go to raise the money, I think um, you know, it will help. And I could tell you, I've reached out to foundations and um, you know, there's a lot of interest in it, a lot of interest in it. And I was talking to Councilwoman Strasburger the other day. And I want you to feel it's more as much a school as it is a farm. So um and just where I am in that project, uh you know, we had many studies done. We overcame so many obstacles. I can go on and on, but I'll let the master plan that I'm having, we're kind of in the final stages of uh finishing. And I'll get you all a copy of that. I want everybody to buy in. It's really a great project. It's a citywide project, really. I imagine people coming from all over the city, kids in particular, uh you know, to, to check out the complex because it's, it's really be something. So master plan, it's in the works. Uh we're still probably a couple of weeks away from getting that together. When we do, I'll make sure everybody gets a copy. I want you to see what we're proposing. Um so, but even if, you know, I'm not able to overcome the obstacles that I have with the, with the big farm and, and note, the farm could be done in stages. We could start growing food next year, you know. Um but realistically, to do what I want to do there, I have to raise a lot of money. And I think Councilwoman Gross is gonna hit the trail with me and we're gonna raise some money to help support this and you know, once I have this professional design done, I'll be able to do so. Well, with that being said, I, I do want to say, even if the bigger farm doesn't go as I wanted to, um I've seen the success that Councilwoman Gross has had in her district. And, you know, I'll credit her for really thinking of the idea. It's really to put it simple, it's supplying people who want to grow food, you know, uh or garden and, and just making sure they have the supply. So it's relatively cheap, this program. Um you know, I've seen the success, Councilwoman Gross, I've been to her sites. I've seen the appreciation letters, the, the sense of community she brought together by distributing what I think is just the tip of the iceberg, what we can do not only in her district but citywide. So um so I, I, and I, and I hope she'll speak to that a little bit because uh, you know, it's a sense of community she brought together, letters and pictures and everything. So it was really, really nice. And I think it could be implemented anywhere throughout the city. So so with that, I'll turn it over to the founder of City Farms, as I dubbed her, Councilwoman Gross, if she'll speak to it at all.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm very excited for the progress you're making on your project also. Um so yeah, if just a brief update, I, I've said this before, I think, um you know, it was something like twenty-four thousand or something like that that I had um in the District Seven Capital Budget Line back in March or April when we transferred that money. And um the really helpful part was um using the, like, half of that, not even, to uh quote one of the landscape architects that DPW keeps on um kind of RFQ'd, pre-qualified, um to be able to kind of survey areas. Oh, I had about twenty possible sites in my district. So it was really helpful to have those skill sets to go through and hone it down to three or four um that would have the lightest, kind of quickest turnaround, which was really the goal here. We wanted to see if we could do something that was demonstrable in two thousand twenty. So these were like mini pilot projects. Um so we found like three or four sites with really enthusiastic residents. They're tiny. They're little tiny bits because what my district has are densely populated neighborhoods, but about fourteen small neighborhood-sized parks, which is a lot. We're very fortunate for that, right? In addition to one of the regional rad parks, Up and Highland Park. Um so it was really those sites, kind of like nooks and crannies in residential areas that people were really interested in. Um and uh we were able to just get them the tiniest inputs, right? We were looking for like what inputs would help these neighbors result in actual food outputs this year in two thousand twenty. And it was just, it was just fundamental things that DPW does all the time. It's just that we weren't doing them for food sites ourselves. Like, can we get a, you know, ten cubic yards of good quality compost, like responding soil and having them come and dump it out. And so we had to use a private vendor, even though DPW has that. Can you repair a fencing? Because as we know, in a lot of parts of the city, there are deer and there's other problems with animals. Um so uh can we get a rain barrel? Can we get a bench? Can we get, just like make us some quick compost bins? Most of these things are five hundred dollar, six hundred dollar inputs. Um and they're, you know, the kinds of things that DPW, DPW does under capital budget every year because they're just inputs to our parks. Um so Councilman Coghill asked me if we could share some pictures. And I did this once before out of order, but I'm doing it in order. They should, this time, Mr. Chair. I see if I could share my screen. I just have some before and after pictures of one of them. Until it's the four sites that we uh were the quickest, you know, and easiest and to do, even though I have got other sites that are interested, was a West Penn Park in Polish Hill. And the pictures are about to see where what they referred to in March as an abandoned garden. It had been one of those sites that had gotten some boxes under the Ravensdale administration. But Polish Hill, a small neighborhood, already has two of its privately owned community gardens that are really robust and loved and, and super full. But there was new energy for this one. Um we have one um that's a neighborhood garden, you for me talked about lots before, Dunkin' Park, that already has perennial fruit-bearing trees. But their long-term plan was to also have some annuals um for food production, and that's still kind of getting off the ground. And the third one is a raised container bed garden. It's kind of a, it's on actually Paper Street. So it's public property, but it's gonna be alongside an extension of a, of a neighborway pathway. So that's a really exciting one. But this is West Penn in Polish Hill. You'll recognize the site when you see it. I'm gonna see if this works here. Uh should be here. Okay, so share. What are you seeing? Are you all seeing it?
That's it. Yep.
Yeah, okay. So you can see um the green space, you can see the new bed, you can see the people at work, and you can see the um this is kind of the summer crop. They've even put in some fall crop. They're still um getting food out of the site. And I think the interesting part that we talked about earlier this year, that's a little different that I want to highlight, is that a lot of our community gardens, either privately owned or, or city community gardens, are the ones we see lots of little squares, lots of, you know, they're private allotments where people have their own bed and take on their own food. And these ones were collectively gardened. So it was all shared and it was all donated. So it was either there was a sign there that people in the community could come pick the food, but also that um it was shared with hungry households. Um so that was a really beautiful element that everybody involved with the project feels incredibly good about. I want to thank the farmers in Polish Hill, um especially Lizzie Anderson and Catherine Anderson, who helped to get this off the ground. Um and um I think I'm blanking out on one of the other farmer's names. We're lucky to have a retired actual commercial professional farmer in the neighborhood, who's name I'm blanking out. So thank you to um who really, like, they are so super organized. So I think I'm gonna click stop share. Is everybody back? Um so I just want to thank you for your continued support. There's more that these gardens want to continue. They would still be growing if they had like coop houses to keep their crops um to extend their season and start their season earlier in the spring that we're gonna be working on. Oh my gosh, my, my wonderful staff member is, is um sending me the name Cindy. Cindy is the professional farmer who really helped us get organized. She sent entire spreadsheets of crop schedules and everything in a, in a really um great kind of farm plan way. They call it the West Penn Community Farm, and it has its own Instagram account, if you can find it there. So I'll stop sharing now, but we really look forward to continuing the investments in these small sites. And again, in just small amounts, but with great output um on these sites and more. So um thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Yeah, I just have something real quick, Mr. Chair. Um I just wanted to congratulate you both on the work that you're doing and the effort you're putting into this. And I'll just say that in addition to educational opportunities and obviously the food and that comes out of it as a, as a um as output, I, I think that it doesn't just have to be limited to community building within the community that it's in. I think this is an amazing, especially during COVID times, an amazing opportunity for building those connections across these dividing lines and across communities. I mean, I keep saying like, more people in Squirrel Hill and Shady Side need to go visit Carrick and Allentown and Bell's who, you know, or wherever, and just, just go and visit and see what, you know, meet people there and like build, build these bridges over um a, across town. And I think that needs to happen, you know, in a, in a lot of different ways. And in a, if we had places to gather and farm together or grow food together, um that's really one of the definite ways that that could happen. So I see that as a real opportunity as well.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to point out that the black farmers do that currently. And we actually have a really great um effort going on now with um Ebony um Lunsford on our side of town. We call her Farmer Girl Eb. It would be great to see us um come up with a way to allow them to use the, the land, not just through the love your block, but sometimes they need more than one block or several parcels or um a different area. But it'd be great to come up with something to help them uh with that, with the land a little bit more than we do now. So I just want to make, point out that they are doing that already. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Councilman Coghill.
I just want to add
Anyone else? First round? Seeing none, second round, Councilman Coghill.
I just want to end with, you're all welcome to the Brookline Farm, which is gonna be the Anderson Farm for all, everybody all over the city, including the kids. And I wanted to say, you, Madam President, you challenged us to grow food and Councilwoman Gross actually grew food. I didn't see the picture up today, but she had a big, beautiful basket of like zucchinis and things. And uh, you know, that's just a benefit, that's just a benefactor from the whole thing. It was really the sense of community and the letters that I saw that people wrote to her over it were, were really more, I think, impressive than the actual food. But we did grow food, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All three bills are recommended. That takes us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh we have two deferred, three deferred papers, bill seven oh two.
Bill seven oh two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to hereby name the previously unnamed trail in Southside Park to Killing Cold Trail.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Bill is recommended. Bill seven oh three.
Bill seven oh three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to hereby name the previously unnamed multi-module trail in Highland Park to Cattail Trail.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seven nineteen.
Bill seven nineteen, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three effective January first, two thousand nineteen as amended entitled resolution adopting and approving the two thousand nineteen capital budget and the two thousand nineteen CDBG program and the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four capital improvement program by reducing bridge upgrades by twelve thousand five hundred dollars and increasing Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reflect the local federal highway administration and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation shares.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Uh we have a couple new papers, bill eight nineteen.
Bill eight nineteen, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the University of Pittsburgh Chiller Plant Project, which will involve the construction of a fifteen thousand ton chiller plant and a turf athletic field located at three five thirty and five seventy Champions Drive. The existing two athletic fields at this location will be removed. The site is five thirty through five seventy Champions Drive in the fifth ward.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Um I think I just want to defer to the councilmen. Um it's uh Councilman LaValle's district, correct? Actually, I think all of these are, at least two of them are.
This is part of Pitt's um overall master plan, which to redo a number of their athletic facilities. Um so, so I'm aware of it and supportive.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to bill eight twenty.
Bill eight twenty, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the new Granada Theater redevelopment, two thousand seven Center Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Uh similar, I just want to say congratulations, I think, on the new Grenada, Mr. LaValle.
Thank you. This is really, this is exciting to really get this um project going. So thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our last bill for today, bill eight twenty-one.
Bill eight twenty-one, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Habitat for Humanity of Greater Pittsburgh, property located at five sixteen, five eighteen, five twenty North Braddock Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So does the councilmen have any additions? District nine? Okay, I'm supportive.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty PM, a cable cast public hearing is scheduled on bill six eighty-four as relates to the zoning of the West Penn Hospital Institutional Master Plan. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by eleven thirty AM today. You may also submit comment by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Please note that comments will not be read during the meeting. Council will also hold an executive session tomorrow, Thursday, October twenty-ninth at eleven AM relative to pending legal matters. Council will also hold a briefing on DHS training for members and staff on Friday, October thirtieth at eleven AM and a second session on Friday, November sixth at eleven AM. Also due to the general Also, due to the general election next week, both. Both of councils' regular and standing committee meetings will be held on Monday, November second at ten A M and one thirty P M respectively. There will be no meetings on Tuesday, November third, or Wednesday, November fourth. Is there any further comments from members?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Burgess.
Yes, I had two things. First of all, I have already reached out. You've heard in public comment. About the cabaret licensing. And I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for already reaching out and. Offering her assistance, but I am, I do, I talked to them yesterday. We do intend to have a community process. To see if we can come to some mutually agreeable terms for the neighborhood and the cabaret. So that's number one. Number two, one of the public commentators talked about Black Lives. Black Pittsburgh rather Matters and was unclear. And so let me, for both him and for anyone else who is watching. Let me make that as clear as I can so that you can understand what we're trying to do. The black community. Has been disproportionately affected by two concurrent crises, the economic crisis. The COVID nineteen pandemic. And then the race relations, public health crisis in our country. Normally in times of crisis and great change, Councilman Lovell now will be coming to you as the Black elected officials of Pittsburgh. Have meetings across the city with our constituents, partners and allies. Since we cannot do so safely in the current pandemic, we are now using the Black Pittsburgh Matters Media Platform. To come to you in the ways in which we can to talk about what we're doing and discuss policy and legislation concerning Black Pittsburgh. These meetings are available via Facebook, YouTube and the city's cable chat. You can contact or ask questions via the Black Pittsburgh Matters Facebook page and Instagram pages. Or email us at Black P G H Matters, that's Black P G H Matters at gmail dot com. You can also speak to us through our Facebook Live hall meetings at six P M Wednesday evening. In fact, tonight, this week's meeting, live meeting is on the Pittsburgh Communities Police Reform Task Force Report that was released last week. We have the chairs and members of the committee and certainly all members of council are welcome to watch the show as well as all members of the community. Thank you for this infomercial for a second.
Thank you. Anything else from other members? Seeing seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.